All right, I have six thirty, so we'll call the meeting to order. The pledge of allegiance, please. Do you have any additions to be attended? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries four zero. Now we'll open up for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything not on the agenda, please come forward. All right. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. And we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? I would like to pull E, five E, the two twenty-fourth street extension request for further discussion. Any other clarifications? Okay, then I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of five E.
I'll move.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, five E, let's quick discuss the extension now while we're still in the consent. My only concern with it, and I'm fine with the time and going through June thirtieth. My only concern is using the pad while in the extension period. I feel we shouldn't be doing that. I, there's enough items in there that we... The width of the driveway was incorrect. There were some other items in there more so than just what the, what the material was. I don't have a problem with the gravel, keeping the gravel there, waiting till we can get some discussion on that. But my view is that since we gave the ninety days, it's out of compliance for three different reasons. I think beyond that ninety days in the extension period, it should not be used during that time, is my thought. Any other comments on that?
I mean, he's made a request for an extension, you know, this, at this point, you know, you... The council would have to extend the order that they entered, or the finding that they entered. So at this point, you know, you guys can impose the conditions upon that. I mean, he raises the point in that the council did find by unanimous vote that the driveway was, you know, out of compliance. Three different parts of the code essentially, you know, having... The whole idea for the extension is to not incur the costs if there's a way to make it less expensive. But allowing it to continue to be used in that interim could, could be viewed as, you know, ignoring a problem that the city council did find unanimously to be out of compliance with the code. It's one thing to not require it to be fixed in the interim while they're trying to come up with some sort of an alternate. But it's another thing to have it continually used out of compliance, actually not even maybe permission to break the code.
So if we add that in there that he can't use it, and then he does use it, what enforcement mechanism do we have to stop that?
I mean, that would be, you know, the question, you know, it could be that the extension was contingent that it's not to be used. And in such a case, you know, if it were to be used, then the city council could, you know, consider that the terms of the extension agreement had been violated, and then there would be the same, the same enforcement mechanism that you guys had before.
So here's my kind of thinking. With all of the other pads that are not in compliance and being used, and then even the ones that we just found out about that are recent, people putting pads in without permits, they're, we haven't done anything about them. I mean, what is the harm in letting it just have the camper parked there? We're toward the end of the season, and, and I'm assuming it's not going to be moved in and out of there a lot. Just park it on the pad. Everybody else is using their illegal pads too. I understand that this is a specific case that has been, you know, called to our attention and whatever. I don't have a problem with them parking it on there, as long as it's not on and off, on and off, on and off. Just park it back in there and...
Well, not to mention what's stopping me from pushing it in a pile and parking it back on the grass? That I'm not using it.
We have our orders, you can't park in the grass.
Yeah, it's not compliant.
But it's not being enforced throughout the city. I mean, come on, Tommy. I'm trying to comply. You guys can't decide on gravel. I'm trying to do everything humanly possible I can.
For me, the issue isn't just... I, I understand the gravel part, but there's the width of the driveway that, I mean, that's still has to get taken care of, gravel or not.
Well, but who's it hurting right now during the extension?
Yeah, I, I think, I don't know if it's hurting anyone.
I, we're a sole lot. We don't butt up to anybody. We're not violating anybody else. All I'm asking is to retain until June until you guys can decide on what to do with gravel.
And if we decide before that?
Well, that's fine, yeah. But I mean, I'm not going to pour concrete in February.
Right, right.
I'm okay with you leaving it there.
And using it?
It'll...
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the extension with the condition that it may not be used during that time. Do we have a second? One second? All right, motion fails for the lack of a second. If someone would like to make a motion then to approve or reject the extension as presented?
I will make a motion to accept the request for the extension and still allow him to use that gravel area to park the camp, the camper, recreation vehicle, whatever it is, up until June, until eighteen.
And that's part of the, that's part of it, so, okay. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
My only concern is that I don't want this to be setting a precedent within our community.
We already have a precedent set.
I know, but we're trying to re...
We've only taken action on one person.
And I'm trying to...
That's what I don't like about the whole thing.
I'm just waiting for the, you know, everybody to get their ducks in a row. All concreted, variance, whatever I gotta do, but we have to figure out what gravel's going to be for me and everybody else.
We don't really even know if he's out of compliance with the thirty-five percent coverage because of...
We would need a survey. According to our rough estimate, it does look like it's over thirty-five percent.
Our what?
Our rough estimate, basically. We don't have a survey. That would have to be up to the residents to get that official survey for us. He is out of compliance with the, for sure, with the driveway. So I, I understand, like, they, like, the interpretation of this, like, the, I mean, we do have people that have been doing gravel parking pads. The, the issue is, is we don't know... It's hard to enforce at this time because we don't know when a lot of those parking pads are going to end. They, the issue here is that it's beyond just the different things. It's three things. We know, I mean, we have to consider that as well. Like, it's not just the gravel. I understand the concern that, and it is something that it looks like we are going to address. We're going to re-discuss, you know, is this something, like, in most communities, if the code is being broken and we see it all over, then it makes sense to change it or discuss a potential change. But in this case, I would say we have to realize that there's three, three different things, you know.
However, and not to interrupt you, when I first received the letter, it says right on the bottom, if I have any questions, I'm supposed to call, in which I did. We've been dealing with this since June, and I haven't gotten any answers.
Let's stick with it. We have a motion, Maggie, in a second. We got to discuss that motion first and get that, stick to the extension itself versus where we are with it. So, any other discussion on the motion that's been made? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails.
Can I just address that I do have a note change between us three, you and the city planner that differs, that does say what things he has proposed that need to be changed, so...
Understand.
And so, I, I guess, I disagree in that fact. Like, we, I feel like we have provided you with the things that need to be changed. But I think moving forward, you've expressed that you want an extension in order to possibly come into some of those compliance.
Well, right.
And so, I, I, I just have to disagree that you didn't get a response or follow.
I didn't say I didn't get a response, but collectively, we were supposed, well, my understanding was we were going to come up with some sort of plan as to how to move forward. You may need a survey. That doesn't tell me I need one.
We need to, we need to continue to sound the extension first. I want to get this resolved before we get too deep into getting off agenda items. So, is there any other motions to be made regarding the extension? I'm trying to think of a motion. I, I'd like to find a way to get this extension approved. I think we need to do that. I think we have to get that done, and if we're getting hung up on just it being used or not.
I, I would be willing to make a motion to grant you an extension through December, the end of the year, for us to get this resolved, and you can park your camper there in the meantime.
So, I'll be pouring concrete in December?
No.
No.
They're saying you have to move the camper in the middle of the winter.
Got extra spot at your house?
I do.
So is that a motion, Liz?
That's a motion.
So we have a motion to extend the, to accept the extension through thirty-one December twenty eighteen?
Correct.
Allowing it to be parked on?
Yes.
Do we have a second? And I'll second it just for the purpose of conversation. Any other conver- any discussion?
I'm a law and order guy, obviously. And I think Chad is here trying to, to work with us to, to solve this situation. If we're going to let it go through December, what's the matter if we let it go through June? I, it's, it's happening other places in the city. You know, we're not making anybody else move theirs. I don't know ultimately where I'm going to fall on this, but at least he's here trying to, trying to deal with it. You know, if he comes back in June and nothing's done, then I think it could be a different story. I, I don't know where I fall on this completely yet, but he's trying to work with us.
I agree. I completely agree with that. And that's why I want to get some sort of extension. I don't have a problem with the date. I don't have a problem going till June. I mean, could we move it to April, depending on whether maybe May? But end of June, I have no problem with. I just feel kind of if, if it is out of compliance, we shouldn't allow, he shouldn't be using it after that, when the ninety days ends during the extension period. I just feel because of the other reasons, we don't want him tearing it up. We're trying to work with him. We don't want it, but it shouldn't be fair to use it if it shouldn't be there and it's out of compliance. That's my only...
Are we prepared to go after everybody in town who's parking on, on an illegal pad?
If they come up, we're going to have to take them one by one, and when those come to us, and if there's extensions and, and they do the proper things as Chad has done, yeah, we're going to have to deal with everything one by one. So I don't have a problem with the date. I have no problem going to June. My, my hangup is, but I won't, if it gets down to it, I won't allow that. I, I, I don't think there's enough for me to... I would rather give the extension versus not get an extension.
So what is the problem with just parking the thing on the pad?
Well, it's, because it's illegal, because of the process we've gone through, because it's out of compli- and illegal is maybe the wrong word. It's out of compliance, and we know that for other reasons. The width of it, it shouldn't be used. We know that. Gravel, even if we allow gravel, it's still too wide. Even if we say today gravel's fine, he's got to tear up a lot of it.
Which he'll do.
Which, which he's going to do.
It is illegal. It is a misdemeanor every single day that exists.
Out of compliance for those reasons. If it was just gravel, I wouldn't have a problem. I mean, we got to have those discussions. We're going to have to have them. I'd have no problem with him parking there.
And I guess part...
Because of the other two reasons.
But it's not illegal to park on a pad that's a gravel pad right now because, yes, it's in our ordinance, but, you know, we let everybody else do it.
Just because we let everybody else do it does not mean that it's okay. I mean, there, there is a thing, my...
I understand, but we aren't going after anybody else. We're going after one person in the whole town.
Because that was the one person that came, that we had the complaint against them.
The extension is for one person. The extension is not for the community.
And my concern, part of my concern is, is that this was done after the ordinance was passed? So the pad was put in...
As were several others.
And the, and if they're brought to our attention, let's take care of them.
Yep, we have no intention of doing anything about them.
That's not true. I mean, I would love to take care of them if I knew about them, but I don't.
So one observation that I have on this is that an extension at this point, so essentially what the extension does is it extends the deadline from the resolution that was made by the council about the in-compliance, giving him more time to get it into compliance. Now, it does appear that there's going to be some, the code's going to be looked at, and the homeowner is in conversations with the administrator and the planner. So putting it out even a little bit does allow that process to move forward. And it isn't, there's nothing saying that depending on where we are and what progress has been made, that another, or not made, or the attitudes of the parties as we move forward as to whether we're trying to come up with a solution here, be it a code fix or a change to the, to actually convert it to a legal parking pad. You know, if it comes into allowing gravel as a surface and shrinking it so it's below thirty-five percent, which the homeowner has to prove with the survey, and making sure that it isn't off of the driveway. So it's a change in the shape of it, change in the size of it, and change in the code to allow the material. If that works out, that's a possibility that, you know, at that point, if that's the plan, but the work can't happen because of weather conditions, that's a lot more defensible extension through the construction season, I view it. Because we can't view this as a variance for one person, because that's a whole process all by itself. This has to be viewed from a legal perspective as an extension on the time to fix it while we are figuring out whether there's going to be a code change and to what the problem is while he's working with city staff. So there was some discussion about a shorter extension, and I just want to bring up that, on the one hand, that allows the process to move forward to change. On the other hand, it wouldn't preclude an extension at the end, or kicking the can down the road.
Solution, a solution at the end of the extension. I think the, you know, just the fact that we are looking at solutions at the end of an extension, I don't care if he parks it there.
The solution, the, the one issue I have as far as, the way it's written, the way it's written, is it says he gets an extension through June, and he can use it through June. So if we go through the process and we find that there is a way to do it, he would not have to do anything through June, because you've already said that he can do it through June. You know, let's say that the, I understand that construction season does not happen in the middle of winter. But June is, you know, well into construction season. So the way it is currently written is essentially a green light to keep on violating the code. And we, I do not think that anybody's expecting all three of those performance standards to be changed. You know, so something has to give on this driveway. So I mean, as it's written, I have a concern in that it's sort of like a carte blanche. You have until June of twenty nineteen to, which is a year essentially from when the city council determined that it was out of compliance with the code.
So what language should be in there now?
You know, it would have to, there would, it would have to be that it would be extended through the earlier of an ex... The hard part is coming up with something like that on the fly here. The way I would probably write it would be that there would be a date, or there would be, you know, after we can reconsider this issue, you know, whichever is earlier, something along those lines. And that's about as squishy as it can get. I, there is something to be said about just an extension to go out a little ways to maintain the status quo while we move forward on the planning commission talking about the change of the code and the city planner talking about what could be done to fix the project.
All right, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to accept the extension request through thirty-one December eighteen. Any further discussion on that?
Who has to wordsmith this? Is that something that the city can work with, Mr. Help with, or...
I mean, the motion is just at the deadline for compliance with the, the finding that he was out of compliance and the time to fix it would be changed from ninety days from the order to twelve thirty-one. You understand that, correct? Your request says through June twenty nineteen essentially would be...
Could you check on that?
Yes.
A motion and a second.
It essentially would be, you know, a motion to, you know, stay, stay enforcement of the order through the end of twenty eighteen.
My question is what happens at the end of December then? So it's a chisel rock out of ice?
No, that's likely another extension. If it comes down to when the gravel's set and we're set on...
What's the point to keep talking about this in June?
Yeah.
Or April, or May first, I don't care.
Yeah, January is not.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the date itself, but... All right, any further discussion?
So what date are we giving him, with yours? Still, it's still ended...
Yeah, the, the motion is second December thirty, December thirty-first. If there's no other discussion, we'll vote on it.
I'll retract my motion.
We have a motion, retract. So then, Maggie, whoever seconds it, do they have to retract the second? Yeah, I'll retract my second also. All right. If someone would like to make another motion.
Oh, my gosh. Sometimes snow doesn't melt until June here.
I'll make a motion to accept the extension to June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Was that retaining use?
Retaining use.
As stated, yep. Any further discussion? I just don't think it's a, I, I want to get an extension. I want to work with them. Obviously, we have some things we need to do. That's why I think it's important to do that. I still don't agree, I don't necessarily agree you should be using it because of the reasons that I've stated. I think Chad's aware of, I felt like that. I think I've been open and upfront with you that that's my feelings the entire time. But I, I think it's important to get an extension also.
I, I agree. I, I'm hoping Mr. Help will continue to work towards fixing it.
Absolutely.
I have no problem with it. I have no problem with it.
I'm just waiting for the, I want, I want a final order on whether gravel's at all permitted. I know I can't have it to the street, and I know I have to cut it down and so on and so forth. But it'll also vary how much concrete I would have to pour and variances and so on and so forth going forward. That's why I haven't done anything is because we're waiting on the ruling on gravel since you guys are aware that other stuff is going on within the city. We either have to yea or nay the gravel and then move forward.
And I agree, Eric. I think the homeowner's done everything to work with the, I think they've been, I don't have a concern with that.
I just don't want to spend undue money. If I go ahead and concrete and you allow gravel, I'm going to be one angry man, you know.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the, the extension through thirty, June of twenty eighteen, or twenty nineteen, allowing it to be used. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move into public hearing on the utility franchise proposal for Jaguar Communications. So I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are in public hearing.
So just a quick, you know, intro to make sure, to make sure we have everything we need in the record. So in the packet that you guys have today, pages thirty-eight through sixty-three would constitute the record for this motion. So that starts off with the resolution that the city council passed on the twenty-seventh. That was, they were going to go out and consider issuance of, the issuance of a franchise. So that notice, that a notice of intent was published twice as required by statute on August thirty-first and on September seventh. Applications were sought and held open for these twenty days as required by statute. The city received one application from Jaguar. The public hearing was scheduled to consider that application. That's where we are today. So this public hearing is Jaguar's opportunity to summarize its application, the detailed cable plans. The public will also have an opportunity to comment. After the public hearing is closed, then city staff will take a closer look at that application that's been received to consider any public input that was received during the hearing, and if directed by council to begin negotiations with Jaguar on the language of a franchise ordinance. By statute, the city council cannot issue an ordinance until at least seven days after the public hearing. So upon completion, a report from city staff regarding the application with the negotiated proposed franchise would be prep, would be presented to the city council for consideration. Now, this process is quasi, quasi judicial in nature, which means that the city council is sitting as a neutral fact finder, so hearing the application, hearing any public input regarding it. So in order to maintain that neutral status, only city staff or legal counsel should directly engage in communications with Jaguar regarding the language of the franchise. Because of that, you know, coming back, the city's going to have to make findings and, you know, find that they're, you know, they're qualified, that they meet the requirements of the statute, and that it's a good fit and in the public good to issue the franchise. So, you know, at the close of the public hearing, basically, the city council, the recommended action or what potential action would be, would be to direct staff and legal counsel to negotiate franchise terms with Jaguar and to make a motion to accept Jaguar's application and proposal.
And that gets done after we close public hearings?
Yes.
All right.
And Jaguar does have a representative here?
Perfect. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, councilpeople. My name is Christine Anderson. I'm the in-house attorney at Jaguar, and as I've requested before, please don't throw rotten vegetables just because I'm a lawyer. We are very excited to begin providing service to the city. We are ready to roll with construction from the standpoint of our planning. In our application that we submitted to the city in response to the notice of intent to issue a franchise, we believe we've provided all of the necessary information for the city to find that we meet the statutory requirements for providing cable service pursuant to a franchise. I would also just note for purposes of the record that those statutory requirements apply throughout the state. Numerous other communities have already issued franchises to Jaguar. Several of them are identified in the application. And so there are multiple determinations that the company meets the state requirements for issuance of a cable franchise. As the council is aware, we hosted a open house here recently. We've had very good feedback from that. We continue to receive communication from people in the community in the surrounding area asking when we'll be ready to provide services. We believe very strongly that with construction starting in the immediate future, we'll be able to provide service, at least telephone and internet, within this construction season. And assuming that a franchise is approved quickly, then we would also be able to provide cable service. Because of the way the franchise works, as the city is, is aware, we cannot sell cable television service until we have the franchise. So for those community members that have been interested in receiving cable television service from us, whether it's bundled with both telephone and internet or bundled with one or the other, those sales orders, if you will, are sort of on hold until we have the cable franchise approved. And, and I know that the community would, that those community members would like very much to see the, the cable franchise approval happen quickly. There is some lead time for us because when we're signing customers up, that doesn't mean that they're immediately going to have the installs, right? So we need to schedule install time as well. And so in order for us to be able to provide those services yet this year, it's important for us to have the cable franchise... for us to have the cable franchise issued sooner rather than later. And in the spirit of cooperation, I've already been working with Mr. Sullivan, as I believe the council is aware. Certainly Administrator McCallum is aware that we've been working together on franchise language already to ensure that there's the appropriate statutorily required parity with existing providers. And so we are well on our way. Mr. Sullivan has advised me that there are still a few little language issues to work out, but I believe those will likely be resolvable within less than a day's time. It just, just requires some communication after he gets direction from the council. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you have about Jaguar's application or any questions that members of the public would like to have answered. I know you've heard a lot from Jaguar and about Jaguar, so I don't want to waste your time with any redundant information, but I'm, I'm happy to provide anything that you need response for.
At this time, I do not have anything for anyone else. Tim, if you have anything or Maggie or- No, okay, then I'll open up to the public if the public would like to come up and talk at all. They certainly can.
Thank you. My name is Kate Timmer. I live in Coldwater Crossing. And I'm concerned about the bait and switch from the first time that the marketing director was here proposing coming into the community. And he said it'll be about fifty dollars a month, which is what I, I pay now. Well, when I came to the open house and the salesperson, not the one that, the marketing director, came up to me, I said, "And I'm only interested in internet." And how much would that be? Well, seventy-five dollars. And I said, "That sounds like a bait and switch to me." And I said, "Well, if you're happy with what you have, just stick with them." I am happy with what I have. They have excellent customer service and I, I'm perfectly satisfied. But because I was led to believe that fiber optics was better, I thought, "Well, I should switch to that." But I want to know what's the discrepancy on the cost.
And I, you can certainly address that if you want, yeah, but-
I appreciate the opportunity to respond. And I would like to note for, for you ma'am, as well as for the council, that we did see that those comments had been made in the city council minutes from last time. And so Mr. Rod, who is our sales director that has been here before and spoken with you, and I did specifically discuss that today because we anticipated that that might be a question. And first of all, the, the first thing we did was I did go back and I looked at the April minutes from when John was here speaking with all of you. And the minutes confirm what we do typically identify, and that's that service packages for all of our services range on it from an individual basic telephone service to the highest end full package from twenty-nine ninety-five to two-oh-nine ninety-five. And there's a range in them. Now, the city, the minutes from the city council meeting in April didn't detail it, but John Rod and I discussed it today. When he was here in April, he was also talking about generally sort of how our services are priced and bundled and packaged together and some things that we were looking at. As a company, we did look at the option of whether there was going to be an, an even lower level of internet service offered. And our anticipation at that point in time was that it would be something priced in approximately the fifty-dollar range. We did market research within our entire territory and we looked at whether that was even something that there was a business case for from the perspective of demand. One of the things that people really like about fiber and one of the reasons that Jaguar has the, the fiber footprint that it does and the reason that that's the only thing we offer anymore is because fiber optic does provide a considerably superior performance to a lot of traditional or alternative options, whether it's copper, whether it's wireless and things of that nature. And because of the demand for the fiber optic quality and speed, there wasn't sufficient market demand for a slower speed. The reason people transition to fiber is because they want the higher speed and the higher data capability. So there wasn't sufficient market demand for our company to put together a different additional package at a lower rate. One of the things about having Jaguar come in as a competitive provider is that nobody's required to switch. We come in as a competitive provider and while we're very pleased with the service that we offer and we believe that the residents will be too, there are always going to be residents who are satisfied with their current service offerings and their current providers, and that's okay. Nobody has to switch to us if they don't want to. But the packages that Jaguar offers, which are detailed in the Exhibit D to our application, it shows what our service order looks like. And so that's got all the bundled packages that offer video. It doesn't show phone only because we're really only talking about the video franchise. But those are the packages that we offer in all of our communities and that's what the market supports for us as a business case. So I hope that that helps address any discrepancy.
Absolutely does, thank you.
Are these prices consistent with other communities in Carver County for your service?
Yes, they're consistent not only with other prices in Carver County, but with most of the communities in, in which we serve. There are a few communities where the prices vary a little bit, generally upward because of the necessary construction to serve that community. And so in certain situations, prices had to be raised to make the business case for extending to those communities. Like I've said before, we bring fiber to the cows and sometimes the cows cost a little more to get to.
I also had the same concern about the forty-nine ninety-five and I thought maybe I had misheard. So I actually went back and watched the, the city council meeting from April ninth and twice in there Jonathan did say forty-nine ninety-five. And even, you know, he was describing to another council member, you know, seventy-five megabits up and down. And she had said, "And that's forty-nine ninety-five?" And he said, "That is correct." So I-
I apologize, I wasn't at the meeting and I can't speak to it specifically. All I know is I can tell you that from a company perspective, and I'm part of the executive leadership group, so every Monday morning I'm in leadership group meetings, we were looking at earlier in the year, a smaller internet package that would have been in that fifty-dollar price range, but it didn't fly from a business case perspective.
Right. Any other public comments? Any other questions then from council? Maggie, were there any comments emailed that you received to put on record?
Nope.
None?
Nope.
Okay. Then with that, if there's no one else who'd like to speak, we'll, I'll look for motion to close the public hearing.
So I was just having really heard of-
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name's Mary Course. I live in Hidden Creek. And just looking at your reviews and just kind of your company information, it looks like you're a Minnesota company, correct?
Correct.
And we are like the northernmost point of your current geographical region.
We are primarily located more in the southeastern Minnesota area, but we have been present in Carver County since the fiber ring was, the build was started in Carver County. And we continue to expand because we're an integral part of that. We actually supply our own company.
And I came from Charter. I'm now with Nu Telecom. I think they changed.
Newtel.
Newtel. And I've been very happy with them. I work from home. I'm a tax accountant. Very, very important. My high speeds are reliable and using high-speed internet through the cables to break. So my question is, it's great that you're Minnesotan, but do you guys have your financials available as far as longevity and, you know, how is it structured to ensure that the residents here? I know the cost model, I understand economics, you know, it's high demand, but if, you know, you don't get the projected numbers or it's not feasible, are the rates going to go up? You know, the bait and switch of, okay, it's seventy-nine ninety-nine and then we don't have the numbers we projected, so now it's a hundred-and-twenty-nine ninety-nine. So if you could comment on that.
I'll take those issues in reverse. With respect to pricing, we do offer both three-year and five-year lock-ins to people if they want to. So that offers extended price certainty for customers for that lock-in period. I'll also note that we don't have an automatic increase. I know, I live in a community in the southwest metro area where Jaguar service isn't offered, so I don't have my own company services. And there, as soon as I'm out of contract, my bill spikes high because I go out of contract. Jaguar doesn't do that. When a customer is going out of contract, we go back out and talk with the customer and even if there's a little bit of delay before we determine what's best for the customer, it stays at that contract price until a determination is made. So you're not going to see that automatic jump in price like you might with some other companies. I don't know about Nuvera, I guess is what it's called now. I don't know what their situation is or what Charter's situation is, but I know we don't do that. I know Comcast does, because it's happened to me personally. With respect to our financials, we are a privately held company and so we do not release financials privately. However, the application identifies what our financial background is. I've also had some discussion with Mr. Sullivan and emailed him and Administrator McCallum and that email is also included in the application. Jaguar is privately financing the build here. Jaguar already has our twenty-eighteen financing secured in general and this was part of our business plan. I can tell you that what is public information is that not only are we a Minnesota company that's been around for a long time, our ownership changed, the bulk of the ownership changed about four and a half years ago. And it again changed recently. We are owned by the Davis family. Some of you may be familiar with the Davis family. They own Cambria, the countertop people, they owned DeVisco Foods until a couple of years ago. They own Sun Country. We are owned by, by the Davis family. They came in and purchased the company, not with the intent of turning it. Jaguar actually has been a leader in, in the fiber industry for years. The company actually started in the mid-nineties and it started in the basement of the building that we still occupy. We've continued to invest. Our home campus is in Owatonna. We've improved our campus, put up an additional building. We have added to our fiber footprint. Our company is doing nothing but growing and it's shepherded by the Davis family who doesn't buy things to buy in turn. And so there is absolutely no indication that the company is going anywhere.
Questions on that? All right, anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Council, any questions? And I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, yeah.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we're back in the regular session now. So Tim, do we need a motion to, a direct staff to-
Yeah, we'd like some marching orders. I think that something simple is a motion to accept Jaguar Communications' application and a direct staff to enter into negotiations for the purposes of developing a franchise agreement for consideration by the city council. Want to read it?
Thank you.
Bottom of the page.
What he said.
Yeah, exactly. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the Jaguar Communications' application and to direct staff to enter into negotiations for the purposes of developing a franchise agreement for consideration by the city council. Do we have a second?
Second. I'll pass it to you now.
We have a motion, a second. Right. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
So then if the, in the event that the city council would want to have a special meeting to consider issuing a franchise to try to get, I don't know what the timeline is. I know that Jaguar wants to start selling cable and they can't do that without the franchise. So if a special meeting was to be something that'd be discussed, it would probably be a one agenda meeting to review our staff report to be put together and then the negotiated proposed franchise. That can't happen until at least one week from tonight because it's a seven-day thing. So if that's something that you guys want to discuss, have to put the timeline and keep the fire under us as staff.
All right, thank you. All right, let's go to seven A one.
From two thousand to two thousand two hundred per year. We recently had Para do an assessment or a cost analysis of what it would cost to increase the benefits even further. And according to their assessment, we would be able to increase it to two thousand five hundred without, without us having to, the city having to contribute more to that benefit level based on their algorithm. So in two thousand eighteen, we did to increase it to twenty-two hundred, we did agree to contribute three thousand eight hundred towards that benefit. But then based on this year analysis and state aid, now we are able to get a greater increase without, pretty much, yes. It's about the same, though. So basically, we'd just be taking our retirement up to another, to the twenty-five hundred without any city contribution. Anything farther than that, I believe, would be a city contribution.
And why is that? Why, I, I'm confused why there wouldn't be an increase from the city's standpoint.
Because their investments. So basically, our investments have done really well. It kind of plays the market on a wider timeline. And then they send us these cost analysis of what it could be.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution nine dash twenty-four dash eighteen dash thirty-one, authorize an increase in benefits for Para Retirement Plan to twenty-five hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
So what kinds of things would kick off a situation where the city has to invest, start investing money into it?
If we went above twenty-five hundred or something catastrophic basically would happen with the market. It plays an average of, I believe it's five years, it kind of, ten years, it kind of looks at that. So it would basically have, the market would have to like bottom.
Crash as it says.
Crash hard.
Yeah, okay.
For numerous years.
Yeah, for like a ten, a long time.
Because of the ten-year average. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries three, zero with one abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Maggie, seven B one, please. Proposed budget.
So at our last meeting, workshop meeting, we kind of went over a breakdown of the budget. Just as a little bit of a reminder or a little, yeah, reminder, general fund is, we're focusing on general fund, which is property taxes, state aid, permits, these, that's how we run our general fund for the city. Tonight, we are studying the preliminary levy. This is the budget, that's kind of the draft form and following its adoption. The preliminary levy or the budget can be reduced, but it cannot be increased. So we did review kind of an expenditure overview of two thousand eighteen at that meeting. Our, our expenditures for two thousand eighteen went around one million, seven hundred and sixty thousand. And this year, I am proposing a little bit change to the budget where we would include a capital line item. And we would be putting preliminarily a hundred and ten thousand dollars into that. And so that would bring our budget up to, for two thousand nineteen, one billion, two hundred and eight thousand, about that. Without that capital, it would be about a million, ninety-eight thousand. And this includes kind of discussions that we've had throughout the year regarding parts, parts improvements that we want to make for next year, public service, capital, law enforcement changes, other contracts that we have like with the county affairs and some other things that were kind of coming up for two thousand nineteen. If you look at page seven B eight, this kind of breaks down our, this shows that our budget or our debt service funds have actually decreased. Through our wage study, we were actually able to reduce our- Through our wage study, we were actually able to reduce our debt service for sewer from 282 to 283. Plus, we do have a reduced expenditure for the fire station. That's our last, 2019 is our last item, and so, maybe 6.4% decrease in our debt service levy from last year. If you, then for the total levy, if you include capital as a new line item that we want to start investing in future, putting aside money for future capital projects, the levy, including our debt service levy, would be an increase of 14.1%. Without capital, it'd be 3.3%. Taken together, the proposed tax rate with capital, it would be 49.8%. That's actually a decrease from last year, which is 13.3%. Without capital, it'd be 42.9%. I am just, at least for the preliminary levy, I am proposing that we at least keep it with the capital, and then we can kind of have, when L already comes in, in a future meeting, we can kind of discuss, you know, if that's where, if we should keep it that high, or if we can reduce it. But, the tax rate would actually go down. What does that do to property tax? If you're, obviously, the market has increased, the housing in there has seen the market's value increase in our housing of... So, houses that were at $300,000 last year with a tax rate of 3.3%, if their, if their houses stay exactly the same, they'd be a tax decrease, but since we've seen an increase in market value, if we kept it at that, if we kept it at 49, 49%, it'd actually be a little bit of a decrease. At 12.11%, so it'd be about 173. Again, it's, to include that capital is really important as we start thinking about reading our streets and, or implementing that street management.
Can you talk a little, just for the people who are in the audience or anyone listening, on what the capital, what this line item's included? Give a little background of some of that, the capital aspect of it?
Yeah, so essentially, this year has been a lot of, we've been doing a lot of planning, doing a lot of studies on, I don't know, where our investments, where we need to invest in this year. And so, we have a lot of developments that are starting to get to the 20 to 30-year mark, where our streets are aging, and we've got to start to meet and practice on those streets. So what we did this year is we did a, kind of a assessment of our streets, and kind of a 10-year plan of how we're going to maintain those streets, because we want to maintain these streets better than having to do it fully, more costly. And so, with that, we've got to start putting aside money in our capital on, start saving towards these projects. And so, we, I mean, obviously, we're going to be discussing this further. I have a financial company looking at kind of our long-term capital plans, like what are our big items that are coming up, and how are we going to find that code? And so, really essentially, it's putting aside money, starting to start savings for, especially, one of our big items are these.
And when does the preliminary need to be submitted to Caraccone?
The preliminary is, needs to be done by September 30th. And so, the, with that information, I do have, I do have the budget items that I included in my workshop, kind of the line items, if there's any questions on those. Otherwise, taking, so the general fund and the debt, our total expenditure for 2019 budget, which we need to pass, is essentially our total budget without our other revenues, like local government aid and other state aid. And so, that's actually our debt levy as well. And so, the council needs to, you know, pass the total expenditures for the 2019 budget, and then following that, there's a resolution that does take into consideration that local government aid and other aids that we get that actually decrease the total levy, kind of, if you get local government aid and other states for that, the tax impact on the...
And the final budget gets approved at the last city council meeting of the year, correct?
Yeah. So, after we approve it tonight, you do have the opportunity to relook in our budget even further and make predictions.
All right, any questions for Maggie?
Oh.
From us, but if you, if you have something you want to comment, certainly, I'll allow it to come up. Nothing else from Maggie? I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 9-24-18-29.
Go.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
No motion and a second. To approve Resolution 9-24-18-29 for a total expenditure for 2019 preliminary budget of Yeah, I think for preliminary, I think we need to add in the capital. I think this is the way to go. We're going to have to take a look at these numbers now. It's certainly an increase, 14% increase. We may have to tweak it some.
And to be clear to everybody, it can go down. We just have to set it for county purposes.
We can't raise it.
You can't raise it. So now, we'll sit down at subsequent meetings and try to pick away at some of the line items, so that it, nine times out of 10, it does go down without...
We've factored worst case, but I do think we have to, with the money we spent on this study, we have to add in the capital on these. We've, there's a reason for that, like the city engineer said, these streets and the new developers, I know getting to be 20 years old, and they have to have melon overlays and seal coatings, and I think this is the way to go.
Otherwise, we'll get hit with it all at one time.
Yep. Certainly millions, up to a $5 million plan for that, so. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four, zero.
So now, when do we, are we going to set dates for, to sit down and go through?
Yeah, I do remember schedule. I don't have it in, I don't have it in some...
You can get, she had an initial schedule from the very beginning, so if that's changed much, maybe we can get that out.
So October, November, but not exactly a date, right?
Uh, I have to look at my schedule. Yeah, there are dates that, along with that, we'll be starting to look at the enterprise funds as well on top of that, and so, yeah, we'll bring them back in.
When does the final have to be?
December.
December?
Last meeting.
We will do the first meeting in December.
All right, let's go to seven B2, please. Preliminary.
Oh, and then you, you also have Resolution 9-24-18-30, that is your total levy, so that's taken into consideration, you're reducing, so you have your total budget, and then you have your actual levy amount that you put the...
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, let's move, let's move to that line item. Is anything...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I kind of, it's kind of one...
Yep, that's the next agenda item.
Yeah, so it's kind of, already kind of one decision.
So is there anything you want to highlight on that? Anything for this agenda item?
So just essentially, like with local government aid, the general fund levy, so it could be $653,748, and then you took the debt service levy, that's kind of items that we, we should step for, and the total levy is $1,131,996. So, that's what we will be...
So we subtract our revenues.
Yep.
From the budget. So this is our tax levy.
Yep.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 9-24-18-30, adopting preliminary tax levy of $1,131,996.
Go.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second, then.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries four, zero. All right, that'll take, city council reports, councilor, anything to report on?
Nothing, sir.
Steven, have you had anything?
No.
Nothing, and I have, I have nothing either. I do know, I thought I did, but. All right, then we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Can we, so are we going to set up meetings for the Jaguar franchise approval in a week? Or what are we doing?
Yeah, so that is kind of a discussion, if you want to, I mean, I know that they're on a, they kind of want to get moving this time of year, so we should do a special meeting, just for...
Otherwise, I have to wait two weeks.
Otherwise, we'll have to wait until the second meeting is... So...
So no later, so no earlier than the first.
First.
As I'm concerned, I think, reach out to them and see what their intentions would be. I think that's something they should be paying for, if they want us to be here on that, for a special meeting. It's my thoughts, but I was going to see if they reached out to us versus us to them, but I think removing, I mean, they're installing already, so just for the cable portion of it, but...
All right.
Whatever, is that something you want? You want Maggie to reach out to them and get their thoughts, see what their interest is?
Maybe, sure.
Okay. Why don't you do that, Maggie? Thank you. Look for a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
Make that motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned. All right, let's move right into the work session. Does anyone need a break, quick?
Nope.
Okay. We'll move into the work session then, to discuss benefits.
Down here, we've been working with some kind of, um, we've been, um, kind of putting together our employee, unemployment information for 2,500. So, in your packet, I just want to give a little history. I know we had a kind of discussion on this already, but I want to just provide a little bit more information on employee benefits. So, the City of Mayor's employment conversation has changed a lot over the last, like the employment, employees have changed over the last five years. The Public Works Department was 21 employees. The Administration Department was two employees, being ministers, until 2016, and one of these employees, few of them did not, the need was different. One person did not get coverage, and then another employee did take single coverage. So historically, the algorithm that we've been using has worked for City of Mayor employees. As of, just standing there, I don't know, about the employees before. So the current employee's benefit is 800 towards the premium for individual or family, 100% for the first $5,000. The life insurance is about $3,000, and for employees, and then dental insurance, right now, we use kind of 100% supply premium. So, changes in employment, like I stated, the city's grown significantly in the last two decades, and the city's grown, city's needs have grown, also resulting in additional employees. We now have two public works employees, the administrative staff, still needs to maintain two employees, but we will utilize these benefits. And not only has the number of employees changed, but the age and the makeup of their employees, we have, we do have younger employees that have families, all the employees now need employees' benefits, whereas in past, that was always the case. So what's been proposed is adding, just, you know, based on our existing city, kind of creating a more robust package that includes long-term, short-term, disability, and then just changing the way that we use our health and dental insurance formula. Health, we would, we have discussed changing to a high delectable standard, health savings with health. So, a little bit of 2018, last year's total premiums for employees dependents is about $30,000. That's how much we paid. The city budget's at $38,400 a year, but based on kind of how we're using the money, we don't pay the $8,400 of it. And that's because each employee has different coverage needs. So, in 2019, due to the changes, the number of employees, we've been, we've placed a premium across the board, and it's gone up 10.3%. So that's just kind of across, that's just health premium.
So if we do nothing next year, they're going up 17.3%?
It'll go on, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's just kind of the health insurance issue right now. So, the cost, I kind of did a breakdown, and the cost to cover the current employees and their dependents would range from, so this is in the, on top of the $38,400 that we paid this year, it would be an additional $16,000 for all of the employees and their dependents, if we covered employees, just say, I mean, we've kind of, the Personnel Committee has discussed kind of different percentages, like if we covered that employee 100% and then the dependent 80%, and then we just, we proposed 100, and, so we just kind of threw down a bunch of ideas, like, hey, what does that algorithm look like? The total cost for health insurance, okay, so last year, we paid $38,400, based on different ranges between 80% coverage of dependents or 100% coverage, it would be between $55,200 and $60,800. So that's, that's a change between $16,800 to $22,100. So that's like, hold on, does that make sense?
So the Personnel Committee is certainly recommending going to an HSA. That's what our recommendation is from the Personnel Committee. The reason we didn't come with a specific option from the Personnel, is there are just so many, we could have, we could have numerous options, it was just hard to get into one, so we kind of left that from, you know, these work sessions at that point, versus spending hours and hours trying to figure out all different things. But the recommendation definitely go to HSA is coming from, from the Personnel Committee, just to add that in.
And then dental insurance. Last year's total premiums was about $2,400 without depending coverage. So I think, right now, like, the decisions that employees have made is that, and you know that this happens everywhere, they assess, you know, their family and how much it's going to cost them, and so some people, unless not, take coverage, health and dental. So the information I presented tonight is based on if employees could put on their dependents, or make that choice, or would make that choice to include their dependents on the plan. So again, it gives the same algorithms, like, and, so the cost difference to cover employees based on different percentages, we were thinking would be between $1,300-ish dollars to $1,700, depending on the increase, and what our algorithm is. So, the total cost for all employees and their dependents, because, like, it would range from $3,700 to $4,100. So, from $2,400, it would increase, increase about $1,300 to $7,000, for dental. Life insurance, stay the same, unless, employees do have the option to elect additional coverage. Right now, the city covers $15,000, $3,000 a month, and that would stay the same. Adding in long-term and short-term would be $40 for employees. That would just be for the employees, but it would be $40 per month, and that's the total of long-term and short-term. So that would be an additional spend of $1,920 for the city. So taken together, if you look at the cost, total cost impact, if we stay with the first amount that we were paying this year...
Do you have, do you have, there's Maggie, I think you can call up that...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
And isn't this...
And isn't this exactly the same as what we talked about two weeks ago?
I mean, it's, I've included some additional in my presentation.
Okay, 'cause I'm looking at it from two weeks ago, and like, it doesn't look like much has changed.
Yeah, and I wanted to give you guys like a total cost impact, like, there is, like, the, two thousand eighteen was forty thousand nine hundred forty four, and then the proposed option's based on eighty ninety and a hundred percent. The dependent coverage and a hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Um, yeah, I, I don't think I got through it, like, very well the last week, so I just wanted to leave, like, show that, um, show the difference, so it's forty one thousand, and then, same thing could be fifty nine, fifty three, depending on the algorithm, so...
But, but those are plans we have to do, correct?
Right.
I mean...
Those are choices.
I mean, some, someone, I'm not sure if we're going at this backwards on, what, I don't, I think we have to decide if there, we won't even make any changes. I mean, are we even, are we keeping health insurance the same, are we just gonna increase it a little bit because of the increase, are we gonna switch to the HSA and then kinda...
Well, I think...
Do we feel we're not being competitive, do we wanna be more competitive, um, again, some of the research that Meg has done, majority of Carver County is in an HSA. I think to be competitive, we should be doing that. Um, uh, there are about half of them that we saw that pay about a hundred percent for their employee, and then a certain percent for their family. I'll tell you that those, anyone who does the hundred percent, they're, they're not doing a hundred percent for family, they're more around the seventy five percentage. Um, family, for individuals, someone...
So where, when you say that, fifty...
One second, for individuals, someone may, uh, some cities may do eighty that, but then they'll do eighty for family, so they bounce them around, go ahead Tyson.
Are you, when you're saying that and giving those statistics, are you talking about the towns that we specifically handpicked that are the same as us?
We're talking Carver County on this, this wasn't part of the...
All of Carver County.
This wasn't part of, this is just what we did from the personnel committee, at, before even we started doing some of the range stuff, the pace stuff.
Okay, so you compared us to towns like Waconia, Waconia.
Watertown, Waconia, Carver, um...
Eight, eight of the cities in Carver County.
Eight of them?
Yeah, we're nine, so two must not have been...
Okay, so...
Included.
At the last meeting, so your numbers that you're giving us here, does this include the exact same thing as what it was, the proposal, we had a resolution in front of us actually last meeting, to pay a hundred percent long-term disability, a hundred percent short-term dis- disability, and then your options here on the hundred and, or eighty ninety?
Right, right, and that, I mean, the resolution, obviously, any documents that gets put in front of you can get changed, like, that was, I mean...
Well, we didn't vote on it, but I'm asking that, are these numbers, this, this presentation...
They're identical, yeah.
Is in, yeah.
The numbers, the numbers are...
So at the last meeting, I kinda wanted to see some numbers, uh, for eighty percent coverage, eighty percent across the board, um, maybe some higher, um, deductibles in, in the HSA. What would that cost the city?
I mean, the, the thing is, and Al can maybe, I've talked to...
Why don't you introduce it, if something that you need to, like, endorsement?
I mean, we've looked at, I talked to Al about different plan options, um, I mean, based on what we currently have, and, I mean, we're going to, yes, we're going to, like, uh, twenty, we would be proposing a twenty eight hundred, single fifty six hundred, um, family deductible, high deductible plan, um, that's pretty standard, I would say, right, Al, like, that's...
Why don't you introduce your own help, come up to the podium Maggie?
Yeah. Uh, so we're not, we're not, we're trying to find a balance, like, between...
I wanna see, and I think I'm with Tyson on this one, I wanna see, you know, who's the carrier, what's the percentage, what's the breakdown, you know, because I wanna make sure that what we're giving our employees is the correct thing, you know, and if there's an HSA, you know, what is their copay and deductible anyway, because if that copay and deductible is high, where the HSA isn't even covering it, how are we being competitive to begin with?
And this one would not have copay, and it would, and I, 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 I mean, I included the price, I mean, I do have documents that lay it all out, but some of it's private information too, that I can't give out, because it's, it's like their age, it's based on age, and it's based, it provides, uh, dependent information, but I guess...
But most insurance companies are willing to say, hey, we have a, you know, a twenty five percent, or a twenty five hundred dollar deduct- deductible and an eighty percent copay, that's what I wanna hear.
And I think we've, well...
Mm-hmm. And I'm not hearing that.
We have preferred one, I mean, historically we've had preferred ones, we decided, I mean, I know Al's looked at all the other companies too, and this one is, sticks with preferred one, even though I know we've compared with other plans as well, and this is kind of, like, for the premiums that we're gonna be paying, it's not, there's not that much of a difference, like, or, or like cost, so it's...
So kind of what I wanted to see is a choice, like, I'd like the employees to have a choice, do they wanna low deductible, or a twenty five hundred dollar deductible, or are they okay with a thirty five hundred dollar deductible? And then I wanna see what it, what it would cost the city to go a hundred percent across the board, a hundred eighty, and eighty eight, eighty across the board.
I, I mean, I, I mean, I feel like I've put that information together, like I...
I don't have it.
Like, okay, so with my discussion with staff, there, from what we currently have, a high deductible plan with an HSA is what they wanna go towards.
Mm-hmm.
What I've talked, when I've talked with Al, my understanding is that, yes, you can go towards plans that have, like, I know there's a state plan option where you can select different plan options, but it's not something, like, once you get into the, um, both from small market to large market, like, the dynamic changes, and, and it's not necessarily going to benefit employees to make that switch. And so I guess, based on testing Al's analysis of what would be appropriate or fit, and budget-wise for our community, not to, I, I don't think we're going to anything extreme, I, I feel like I've been going, I've been actually going, trying to go towards something that, like, balances both needs, but...
But if our employees aren't currently happy with the insurance plan that they have, you know, I, I see, yeah, okay, we can either pay, you know, the eighty, ninety, or a hundred percent, but what's the insurance?
Well, the insurance is, and I think I included in there, is, I don't, I think I included, well, maybe it was in a different packet, it's a...
I mean, what's, what's... 'Cause I'm looking at the one from two weeks ago and the one from today, and I'm like, I'm not seeing...
Maybe it's, yeah, maybe it's from the personnel, um, but it's a...
What's your deductible and copay?
Twenty eight hundred dollar, uh, individual, fifty six hundred dollar family, and so it would be once you meet your deductible, it's a hundred percent.
So it's a hundred percent copay?
Co-insure, so...
Co-insurance then?
The individual, the insured individual's responsible for the first two thousand eight hundred dollars of eligible expenses for the year, a hundred percent is on them. After that point in time, the carrier makes an appearance, and starts paying at the co-insurance, in this case, I believe it was a hundred percent co-insurance plan. Now, on the family side, there'd be a five thousand six hundred dollar deductible for the family, at which point, once they met that family deductible, then it would be covered at a hundred percent.
So then, what, I mean, twenty eight hundred and fifty six hundred are pretty high, so what is the expected HSA that you guys are, that, that's being looked for?
Well, the proposal that I had in the budget that I talked to the personnel committee about is about half. So the, the ci- the city was, based on these numbers, would contribute about half to the HSA to cover that deductible, and then the employees could contribute the rest.
But then it would depend on whether it was individual or family, so the person who is choosing the family option would get more in the HSA than the person with the individual.
So on these numbers, you have, I'm confused, I'm confused, on these numbers, you have it also, the city contributing to their HSAs.
Yeah, I was wondering that too, I don't...
Wait, I missed that, I missed that somewhere.
Well, I don't know, it's, I know we...
'Cause obviously the employees can always, can, but they'll be able to do pay, payroll deductions and contribute to their HSA a certain amount, right?
Right, right.
Mm-hmm.
So where, that's the number I'm missing, I'm missing that.
So, I, I think I...
And, and I'm sorry, Liz, does that answer your question, on the transpar-...
It, yeah, it does now, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, I didn't see where we were contributing.
Well, yeah, and I, it must've been in the personnel packet, um, but, yeah, so it's in, included in the entire cost, but yes, it's about, on top of the premium, and based on, so based on, I looked at each employee individually, like, what we currently have, and I didn't want to include the specifics, because I know some of them are private. So what I did is I said, based on what these are...
I think I answered my own question, I'm sorry, you can keep going, thanks. By the city, say we go to the scenario, the city pays, pays a hundred percent on the employee, we're paying that in their HSA, is that, is that what paying a hundred percent of it is, or...
No, you're pa- you're, you would be paying a hundred percent of the...
Of the premium?
Premium.
Okay, got it.
You're ten, yeah.
Okay.
Plus a little bit for the HSA each month.
Plush, okay, okay, so I just answered my question, okay, try to keep it all straight, I'm not an insurance guy.
Did these numbers come from you, have you seen these numbers, like, I...
I helped work with Maggie to put together some of this information, um, I didn't put together the, the final piece that she's presenting to you right now.
So in an, an employee scenario here, if we pay employee a hundred percent, we're paying a hundred percent of the premium, and these numbers are reflecting, we're putting a certain amount into their HSA, how much?
So it would be about, okay, so if it's, I don't know the exact monthly amount, but, so it's twenty eight hundred and fifty six hundred, so it's, I think what I calculated out was that it would be about fifteen hundred every year for single, and then three thousand for the family, so if you take that...
Into the HSA?
Into the HSA.
Into their HSA, okay.
Um, just a... So you're...
It's just half of their...
It's half of them.
It's, it's half of their, yeah, deductible.
So it goes into a health savings account to help cover the cost of the deductible, over how?
Well, once their HSA gets to fifty six hundred, they're good. They'll never spend more than a year, in a year.
Once the deductible... Once, once you get, hit the deductible, it's a hundred percent.
And HSA's roll over year to year? It's not enough, FSA's stop at December thirtieth, but HSA's roll over year to year, so if there is a catastrophic event, and for whatever reason, insurance doesn't cover it or something, then you got that HSA money to cover you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, you use it for everything, you use it for your deductibles, you use it for your pharmacy, you use it for whatever, so...
Yeah.
No, I get that, so, so on a family...
It also caps out, right?
So on a family, if we're, what, what do you say, three thousand for family? So next year if we put three thousand in one, and no one ever went, didn't use any, next year we put another three thou- after three years, we put nine thousand in there, the most you'll ever need in a year is fifty six hundred, so...
As long as we don't change insurance policy.
Well, yeah, yeah, if we don't change policies, or, luckily have some ca- you know, they use that amount every, every year, it does.
Your age just stays, can stay with them.
Yeah, your age just stays with them.
I mean, if you don't use it, you don't, I mean, if you don't use it, you get it, but it's also seen as a benefit, because...
It rolls over.
See, that's the number, I don't know if we...
You also don't, you also can't use it until, like, retirement age, anyway, like, unless it's on medical.
It continues to accumulate, there's no maximum amount you can have in there, it has an annual contribution maximum between the employee and employer. Um, when an employee leaves employment, they do take it with them, it is theirs, and then they can use it over their lifetime or their spouse's lifetime to cover any eligible dependent expense.
But you don't have to pull it out of your HSA, you, you can keep your HSA, just...
Correct, yeah. Yes, you can, and different councils or counties have also set up, um, rather than just having an open checkbook, have set up different checks and balances, and, um, they can set up and say, for every percentage or dollar amount that the employee contributes, will also contribute a certain percentage. If this is a good deal, we'd like to see a buy-in, is that what I'm saying?
I, I, I actually work for a company that says, we'll, we'll put in five hundred dollars a year if you put in five hundred dollars a year. I mean, if you wanna put in a thousand dollars, that's fine, but the company would only put in five hundred if you put in a minimum of five hundred.
Yeah, I think there's always kind of, like, a back and forth there, when a company do contribute.
I, I didn't know these numbers reflected that much into their HSA. I don't, I don't know if I...
Is twenty eight hundred the low end, or the high end of a deductible in an HSA, I feel like three thousand thirty five hundred?
On a, yeah, on a, on an HSA, about the minimum side we're looking at is probably about fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars to be qualified based on federal, federal qualifications.
Sure.
Um, the maximum we're looking at is probably about, I'm gonna say about sixty five to sixty eight hundred, that's for a, an individual, and then those amounts double for family, okay?
And I shouldn't advertise ten thousand dollars for an individual.
Well, it can't be that high, and I appreciate that, but it could be if...
Insurance company I worked for had that, so...
But it can't be post ACA, or what's here, um...
Sure, right.
Oh, yeah, that was before that, so...
Yeah, so I, I don't want, and also, out of network, um, out of pocket, could be a lot higher than that, maybe fifty thousand dollars. So there are those different dynamics that come into play, and they get mentioned to me, and we see it quite often in some of the smaller growing cities, um, outstate areas, that they feel that they're almost becoming a puppy mill. They hire a new employee because the employee doesn't really have the experience in whatever the job might be. The employee now has experience because they've had some work under a municipality. Within a thirty mile radius, anywhere you go in Minnesota, there's probably no shortage of other cities, counties, and school districts, that now that person with a resume with experience can go to. Most of us, fourteen, twenty to thirty miles to and from work each day and not think anything of it. The other dynamic in the public sector, if I was a public, as a public employee, I can move from public employer to public employer, I don't lose anything from my retirement. Apparently, does not, really, does start over again when I go to another public group. And so we, we typically will see that a lot, and if that employee feels, and they talk to each other, it doesn't matter, you know, what city or county they're from, what are you guys getting over there, what does your employer provide for you? We see those cities will continue to, I don't wanna use the word struggle, but they do struggle, because they'll hire someone again for that short period of time, the person has a little bit of experience, and now they're gonna go over here for whether it's pay, or it's benefits, or a combination of both of those.
So I think we've talked about that plenty on this council, and we recognize that, and that's why we're making the changes. But we also have to, um, be responsible to our constituents and the taxpayer, I mean, we can only go so far and, and spend so much, and that's just the way it is.
Some councils, I'm sorry, some councils have identified, rather than a defined benefit, a defined contribution. So what that again simply does is it puts some range on it, it can be satisfying to the employee, but at the same time, the employer can say, we'll pay this dollar amount or this percentage to the employer or to dependents, but there's a cap on that. Because a, a person that's more mature, that has a large number of kids, if it's simply a flat percentage, you could be looking at three thousand plus a month in premiums just for that one employee. And that's where if you, if you think about putting a cap on it, that if we do have family coverage, it's maybe these percentages, not to exceed this dollar amount. I'm just sharing different things with you that I...
And I agree with what you're saying, I mean, I think we're all in agreement, we need to take care of our employees, I think we can all, I mean, I think we all agree with that, that there are, number one asset, we really need to stay competitive. Um, I do feel our, uh, health insurance for family has not the best, it is lacking some, but that, that being said, but I've never been in favor of anything we've ever done, that we have a forty four point eight percent increase, that's a lot for year to year, I, you know, if it's something like that, I'd almost wanna step it, that's a thing, but now, I'm hearing that forty four percent increase includes money into an HSA, which that, maybe that gets me, makes me feel some better if we can work out a different number with that, I don't think it has to be...
But I, I, I really wanna stress too, that you guys would understand, but two, like, like, your, it's, your employee makeup has changed, like, significantly, and so it's just like the makeup, like, and I don't wanna go into the specifics, I don't wanna call, you know, highlight on certain people and their choices that they make, but I think you guys have been, you know, in the past, you have had employees that haven't taken insurance, you haven't had to budget for that, and so, I think, you know, just with the, the changes, yeah, it does seem like a big percentage, but it, it also is because of these changes that have happened, and it's like...
I agree with that, I, I mean, I agree with that, I mean, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just like, you, yeah, I mean, if we would have...
The numbers need to be broke down different, I think, so we can understand what that, what that is. The numbers need to be broken down different, I think, so we can understand what that, what that is.
Yeah, I kind of want to see it in the form of-
I mean, an increase that I see-
This plan has this deductible and this whatever, and this is how much it'll cost. A hundred percent and eighty percent. I feel a lot better about putting money into an HSA and paying a hundred percent long and short term disability if the employee takes some ownership and has to put a little bit of their skin in as well. I like the eighty percent thing, I just do, and choices. You know, eighty percent of this plan's fine, eighty percent of that plan. You want a higher deductible, lower deductible, you get the choice, but-
And is it, I mean, well, we don't, I think the way our city is set up, we don't really have any different plan options.
Based on our size, we can have one plan option, if that's what you're talking about, as far as plan options go. Each year we look at the major carriers out there that we could possibly get rates from. Again, as Maggie kind of mentioned, well, we can move to another carrier and save roughly seventy five bucks a month for the entire group. At the end of the day, I'm not real big on, let's just hop, just take a hop in, if there's not any more reason than that.
So you're saying because of our size, there's only one HSA that we-
No, I think you were talking about plan choices.
Oh, it can't have choices.
Plan choices, yes.
We pick one and that's it.
Yes, based on the size of our-
And who picks that one? And that's going to be a debate every year as well, as far as I'm concerned, is who picks it? Do the employees pick it? Do we pick it?
I guess, you know, I, I, what I proposed was, I know last year we were trying to shift to the high deductible agency, but, and so, I guess I was trying to, I get, I, what I was bringing for numbers to the personnel community was an HSA plan with a high deductible that was kind of comparable to other cities in that area. But, um, I mean, if you want me to look at, want us to look at, um, I mean, it sounds like you're wanting to see what the premium changes, or what it would cost, change in premium cost or different?
Mm-hmm. Now, we're a small group, and all that simply means, um, we have less than fifty full-time equivalent employees. So under that umbrella, under that arena, each individual in the group would have their own distinct rate based on their age, and each child would be a, an additional rate, if you would. So if I had a family of five, myself, a spouse, and three children, my rate would be based on my age. Spouse's rate would be based on spouse's age. And if you had three children, all three children, or twenty or under, then you'd pay the child rate times three. Not any children that were above age twenty. The children below, twenty or below would pay the child rate. The children above age twenty would pay the twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, or twenty six year old rate. I'm just sharing with you. Those are the different pieces, so it can be a bit challenging, you know, for us to say, okay, tell us how much we, could we expect to pay? The variables can always change based on who do we expect to hire which, if that makes sense.
So is there going to be a different rate for an employee, a spouse, and a family? There will be three possibly different premiums?
We don't have, we're not going to have a, how do I say this?
A spouse, it's just going to be a family and then per-
If I had, if I had the employee and spouse that are the same age, whatever age you want, that rate, that cost would be the same for each one of them, okay?
But I think, I think with, you know, there's no like clumping. It's everybody's individual.
There's no singular family.
Like you, you don't get a package for a family of one, or, or just, if, if, everybody has different, their own cost.
Okay. And it's going to be up to the employee to say, nope, I just want coverage for me. No, I just want it for me and my spouse, or I want it for everybody. All right.
So, as you're more senior employee here, I guess.
Just throwing that out there.
You're talking on no sleep right now. Yeah, I know.
So, when I started with TruAmeric, twenty three, it was five years ago actually, it ended up over three. Um, our health insurance, this is for Medicare, we have like a five hundred dollars up the full payment. And I know insurance has changed, it's been, you know, it's been about eleven percent, but, and we've kind of, we've kind of always reduced our coverage to eat our dollar amount, you know, for kind of a hundred percent employee coverage. Kind of how, you know, when the other ministry was here, and we kept kind of reducing our coverage. So now we're kind of up to, I think we're up to, that baby's not looking at it others, with like seven, five hundred dollars, and up to sixty percent, sixty forty or something like that. So it's, it's really kind of gone downhill quite a bit since I've been here. So even, so with that increase too, where you go from, you know, it's, it's a big increase in interest, but I mean, if, if we actually still kind of have that current plan, kind of what we had when I started, I don't think that increase is going to tie. So this kind of jumps back up to kind of where other cities are.
Because each year we brought it down.
Each year we brought it down.
We decreased.
And I think that's the other piece of the puzzle that's missing for me. I don't know what our plan currently is.
And that's why, this is great.
That's why she's asking for the plans. Can I see what the plans are and-
So are you saying for individual, when you start, let's say, the city would contribute six hundred dollars, always? But because of the way insurance, to stay at that six hundred, so you didn't have to pay-
Yeah.
You had to choose less than that.
Yours got worse and worse.
Right, yeah.
To keep it, you just have-
We stayed consistent.
So some of it's making up.
For me, I'm young, it costs two hundred, three hundred bucks. And then, you know, if you stayed consistent, we kind of stayed, you know, we tried to keep it even that dollar amount, but our coverage, I think if in the next year, I think we went to like a fifteen hundred dollar debt up, and next year we went to a twenty five hundred dollar debt. So it's kind of, you know, just because insurance has been just crazy, you know, we kind of-
And we also had an employee that was using the full amount and kicking in their own money, and so that is also the reason why the insurance kept getting worse and worse. Because-
I think some too, we need to look at the last ten years, what, what have we increased from the city in the last ten years? And look at the, you know, because that'll help.
Right.
As that's stayed, and it's gotten worse, ultimately worse.
Right.
So maybe a forty four percent increase really isn't that much. If we haven't had any increase in ten years, it's four percent a year.
Just, yeah, just, I think I, I think when I started, I actually don't know, I think we were right around five hundred dollars or six hundred dollars. I think it was five hundred.
It was five hundred.
Right, yeah.
And we, and we just increased it to six hundred, and then I think just the last year, it was eight hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So, right now you're doing a seventy five hundred dollar deductible, and it's a sixty forty? Where what this is would be a-
Hundred percent.
Twenty eight hundred dollar deductible, hundred percent.
Right.
Okay.
With my family, fifty six.
Fifty six, yeah. Okay. Okay. That gives me a much better understanding, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Me too. Me too.
Okay.
I, I'd like to see us to move, I mean, something I, I want to, and obviously not today, I mean, this is just a work session for discussion, but, um, I was concerned with that big jump. But I do, now that I'm hearing we're contributing to the HSA also, I would like to work out some sort of contingent, you know, I've heard different things of, we put in a certain amount, the expectation will be the employee puts in a certain amount, or, and again, I, I don't like to always compare what we do in the private sector versus public, but for my company, they'll throw in money into my HSA if I go and do my well check every year, and do some of those health things. I wouldn't mind, you know, I think we can get creative on what we would want to have happen, and then do some of those things, you know, if, um, you know, someone's a smoker and they quit smoking, another five hundred would go into, or things like that, but, um, sure.
Counties do that. How about if you never smoked in the first place?
Then you could start.
Another wellness program.
And you pick another wellness program to earn your point.
It's not, it doesn't matter if they're not, I mean-
Yeah. This is definitely, who shows anything about fair?
But, so I'm li- now seeing these, I'd like to see the breakdowns a little bit different, kind of see where we were. What, what percentage of this forty four is just getting us back to where we should have been, to get us back to five years ago where our longest tenured employee was?
There's still some other things I'd like to look at too. Is, is the, the eighty percent a straight across, um, or a hundred percent higher deductible? Tweaking some things a little bit. Maggie, can you, when you do those pie graphs in the budget? And can you pull out just the, the percentage of the budget is salary and benefits? Can I see?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
I want to see what that is now, and then what that would be with the full nine yards here.
And when, when, if we do nothing, when is insurance, when do they sign up for twenty nineteen?
Let's open a room and-
We're a twelve one.
Say again?
We're a twelve one renewal.
Okay. So we have to make a decision the next couple months.
Absolutely. And if that, so if you switch to, if we switch to something, it's still that same date?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, as a group, we can maintain that same renewal date. Some of the reasons that we went with a twelve one renewal date is, um, we know much earlier in the year what those renewal rates are for budget purposes. If we were a one one renewal, one one rates won't be released to small groups by the state until probably about the middle of October. We know what that means as far as budget wise. Our numbers are already solid by that time, and now we can't do it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd like to continue to have these on work sessions. Again, let's get Maggie at whatever else we want to see, let's-
Yeah, email me, like what is your money?
I'm still like the other scenarios. I would still, I mean, I like the scenario of the one hundred percent employee, then eighty, ninety, a hundred for family. I wouldn't mind seeing a ninety for employee, and then a eighty, ninety, a hundred percent for fam- or something. You know, a couple of different scenarios that way, Maggie, if you could? And then maybe break it down so I know what part is, what's our percentage increase for just the insurance portion of it, not including what goes into the HSA? I'd like to see, for me, I'd like to see that. So I know what the insurance increase is. Then we can get creative with the HSA or determine, you know, what this first year, let's only put half of what we, because of the other increase and-
And then what's-
You know what I'm saying? And then maybe the following year, we can add more into an HSA or something, but I, I'd like to step it versus a forty forty, forty four percent increase.
And then the actual cost of the long-term disability, short-term disability, does that go by age too?
Actually, no.
That's just a plan.
That's just a composite rate.
Okay, so we can get that. And then I have one more, um, thing that I've been thinking about now. Since we went to, uh, change some things with the billing and stuff of the water and the sewer bill, are we still keeping, um, staff at thirty three percent?
Um, oh, I just think what we were-
Mm-hmm.
That's just the algorithm that, I, I mean, we can always adjust that. I, I mean, she does still do a lot with-
The water and sewer?
A lot of-
I was just wondering where that's at now, since we took that big chunk of time away.
Yeah, they would say, I don't know how much time to, I mean, I know you, it would take you-
That you were spending billing?
It was, yeah, doing the water billing.
Or printing the bill.
Yeah, you were doing a lot.
That was on the one day though. I don't know if that was-
Well, at the time, it was a big chunk of time, that's why we switched over. We got talking to switching over to Harold's room. I mean, is it a big chunk of time or not?
Four hour, half the day, yeah.
Yeah, I would, would you say the billing is all month? Like, I would, would you think it's still thirty, you could, I mean-
For each place, sixty six percent.
Yeah, because you're telling me billing is all month. I mean, it's not just one day that I do it, I'm constantly doing stuff, what you told us, though.
I mean, we can really-
It's almost a daily thing, whether it's entering the town, you know, or-
We really should look, see what they used up, on the rate study, and see if they still use that number also.
Yeah, I think that's what they use, but, uh, I can have a-
So sixty six percent of your day is spent doing water and sewers type things, yeah, so I just-
Well, I would say a third of it, I would still say-
Thirty, thirty three instead of sixty six?
Twenty five, thirty, yeah.
Yeah, I was just, I noticed that in the budget when Maggie broke it down, and I'm like, oh, I wonder if that's still accurate.
Yeah, it could be.
All right, is there anything else that anyone wants from Maggie at this point?
No, sir. Don't email it.
Yes, I mean, one thing, two, and I don't know if this is something that you know, or not, but I know because of, like I said before, I, to help cover some costs for employees, and we're trying to kind of make this transition, um, like I know we don't use, we haven't been using a lot of our dollars, and we're, I did for benefits, so I'm just, for these next three months, like, would, we use some of that money to help cover some costs for some employees, but-
How soon before he comes on?
He's coming on, it's the first month over.
There, that's the, that's the extra money then, right?
Well, the thing is, is based on our policy, we tap out at eight hundred. And so I'm wondering, like, if we, if like for the three months, like, can we use some of the money that we don't have? Like, like, I only use half of my money, I mean, I don't know.
And put it towards what?
I don't get what you're asking.
Take that nine thousand dollars that we haven't used.
I'm wondering, like, it's like, you know, because we don't have, we have a change to algorithm, you know, it's like, right now it's eight hundred for employees, so we're budgeting thirty eight thousand four hundred, but we're only using thirty thousand of it right now. We're ha- we have extra money in our budget that we're not using.
So you want to use that eight thousand account to pay someone?
Yeah. I mean, just as we get it figured out.
With health insurance?
Yeah, just the premium.
With the premium? Oh, boy.
That's going to come to council.
That's a doozy.
That's going to have to come to council.
It's kind of a pooled concept, I think, is, is what Maggie's describing there. You know, there's this many dollars amount per employee times this number of employees, so therefore, and some cities have done that, they've said, that's our budgeted pooled amount that we will contribute. In essence, if a group artificially blended their rate, and they took and they said, even though our rates are based on our age, we can internally blend them, that would be utilizing those, when you're describing the hundred dollars mark, I think is what it's called.
Yeah.
It's your decision.
I mean, and it would just be for three months, till we get this other stuff figured out, but, I mean, I don't think we can make a decision for anybody. It's something I'm wondering if we could consider.
We can't. Well, I, I don't know, that seems odd to me, to do it that way, but-
There's just obviously different ways that-
If you want to come back on the next council meeting and say, hey, I want to raise it to a thousand dollars, and everyone has that option, use it for the next three months, I, that's a different story for me. But to take, because there's extra money in the pool, and divide on who you want, who's your favorites, and who you want to give it to, and I, and I mean, and I, I don't mean it that way, but then, that's where I think the problem could lie, is why does this one person get more and this one doesn't?
Yeah, I would say it would happen.
If you came and said, for the next three months, I want to, I think we should go up to a thousand, and it won't hurt our budget, because we properly budget, we haven't used it all, I would be on board with that, but I think it's how we approach it.
And maybe some people aren't even on the, the plan because their spouse has coverage, they're only on single, that's, it, yeah. I mean, I get why you're doing it, but-
If I'm hearing you right, saying you want to take some of it and, and possibly use it to help one employee or two.
I guess the part, the part, I mean, and I don't know if it's possible, but I, I get frustrated, because like, yeah, I, I am one of those people that it's just people coverage. Like, I don't have, my daughter is on my ex-husband's plan, so I don't use my fully covered. I get frustrated that, that extra money can go towards, like, my colleagues to be used. Because I would rather have them have, you know, I, I have the, I'm fortunate to have hundred percent coverage, but they don't. So it's like frustrating, but, I mean, I don't-
I would love that too.
I know.
And, and I see, I see-
That's one of the reasons why we're changing it, because it's kind of a weird plan.
From a legal standpoint, that we don't do some, you know, that we're, it, it, it could be misconstrued as playing favorites, or why does this person get this and this person does, you know? I get what you're saying, I totally agree with you. But there, we should be able to use it. We budgeted for it, we planned for it, but the approach to it just seems-
Yeah, I know, and I don't, I mean, I, I get that too, I.
But, but like I said, if you came back and said, hey, I want to, let's increase it for the next three months, it's still within the budget for going to a thousand for three months, and it's still fair, I would, you know, I'd be open for discussion.
And if you use it, you use it, or you don't?
Yeah, it's how we document and approach it. I want to do, um, you know, I, I don't want to seem like I'm not in favor, how I.
Right, 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 it is a.
And like you said, we all want to keep employees, we all want to be competitive. We don't want to risk any employees leaving.
It's just kind of unprecedented.
But I do think we're at that point, I think we're at that point where we risk employees leaving.
And I want to make sure that I, you know, because up until tonight, I've only heard from you, and I've only heard, you know, the numbers and all that, so I guess for me, I want to hear from the employees. You know, this isn't my insurance, so I need to, and I appreciate you speaking up tonight, Kyle, because this is your insurance, and you do have a baby now, and I want to do what's right as a, as a city, I want to do what's right by the employees, and unless, unless I hear something.
Well, yeah, and I think that's great information that we got.
Absolutely.
But that's not specific to what one employee might want versus what one, you know, so Maggie, as she oversees it, kind of came with what she thinks best for the employees and the city, which is her role, and she's kind of talked to them on hers, but I, I don't know if we go to each one, but, yeah, information like that, we need, that's a big piece, what you just, what, what you brought forward, that we, we've missed in that. And as you say it, and I think back, as I was thinking back, you're absolutely right.
Making up for a lost time?
We need to get back up just even. We, yeah, it's, it's wrong, it's wrong.
Because our deductible on our current plan is as high as a lot of that mid-tier HSA plans are. And with our plan, because it's not a qualified high deductible plan, an employee, even on their own accord, can't contribute to an HSA.
Yeah, so let's continue to move forward on the, you know, Maggie, and like I said, I think you got some information with some people are looking for now, and if there's anything more anyone thinks of, certainly email Maggie with more, so we can continue to move forward. Are you going to be able to find the historical data that you're being asked for? I'm a little, I'm wondering about that, public records or.
Well, we've got to figure the budget.
I can find what I have. Well, it's going to be on pay stubs too. Well, no, that one's showing, that one's showing.
We've got to have a plan.
Yeah, we have to have the plan every year.
Yeah. But the budget, the budget might have stayed the same, because the dollars didn't, it's just the plan.
Well, yeah, there were the, what the changes are to the plan.
You should be able to have a file, there should be a file for every one of them.
So who's all family? Your, your family, your family, and your, is your wife currently on here?
Yeah.
Why can't we ask that?
I don't know if we can ask that, can we?
It was a volunteer situation. I just want to get my mind around some of it. I didn't ask him anything other than who wants a family plan. For your family.
And because I'm young, say, you can, you can, my family a hundred percent.
Right, right. Right.
You mean, with the baby, would they get a hundred more? Because I'm young, the baby's little, of course, you'd be great at.
Yeah, yeah.
Great at that hundred, you know.
Being young, and you're right, being young, that you're at that prime child bearing age, where it's about to be higher, and someone who's like in their forties or drops off, and you go back up, and you're like.
No, it, based on the ACA, it has to be roughly like a twenty-three year old and a sixty-three year old. The twenty-three year old's rate has to be about one-third, it's almost a mathematical equation, of what the sixty-three or sixty-four year old's rate is.
About a one year old, because I know the most expensive area person will have.
Yeah, from birth to age twenty through age twenty, for our plan we have is two hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-eight cents a month.
No matter, no matter where you are in that, we're.
Doesn't matter.
Our current plan, or?
Yes, our current plan. Yeah, no, it's okay.
That's why I want the high chart, I want high chart and see what this outlook is, or, or, there are certain percentages that should be a benefit of your salary, and I just want to keep what we're out there. I don't think that's the industry.